I now call to order the Witten City Council Meeting of September 24, 2018. Sandy, please go ahead and roll.
Biandolillo.
Here.
Bogo.
Present.
Jaworski.
Here.
Kaski.
Here.
Levon.
Here.
Sackus.
Here.
Saloto.
Here.
Approve the council minutes.
I'll make a motion. Minutes of 9, 10, 2018.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Kaski, seconded by Councilman Sackus, to approve the council meeting minutes of September 8, 10, 2018. Discussion?
I think that the address is rolling on the complaint near Ganley. I think it's 298. I think it needs to be 289.
For audience participation, the address of the... Mrs. Stanning of 29803 with evidence.
Is that the right address?
No, it's 289.
It's 289 is what I thought.
Okay.
I heard. I had it means flat, but...
Can we draw that first? Do we draw those motions and do it corrected? Yeah, make a... Make the motion correct. Can you draw your motion?
Okay.
And Joe, draw your second. Then...
Okay. And make a motion to amend the September 10, 2018...
To approve the minutes as amended.
To approve them as amended.
Moved by Councilwoman Kaski, seconded by Councilman Sackus, to approve the council meeting minutes of September 10, 2018 as amended. Discussion? Sandy, please go ahead and roll.
Biandolillo.
Yes.
Bogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kaski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Reports of communications from the mayor's secret director.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Not a lot to report this week. I did attach letter of support from the Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Committee. They review ballot issues, levies and such in the seven cities that they serve, and do offer their support in our levy. I had my town hall last week, which is now available on the city YouTube channel. Did hear from folks at the United Way this week at the Mayor's and Managers Association meeting. They kicked off their 2008 campaign last week. I left some info with the directors that are offsite here at City Hall. But I think it's important for everyone to check out what United Way does here in Lake County. A lot of people think of it as a national organization, which it is, but they have county chapters all over the states. So some of the things that they do, there was just a couple of quick numbers. There was for our youth, 13,123 children benefited from mentors and youth enrichment programs, 17,100 children benefited from reading and educational programs, 1,100 people victims from domestic violence benefited from refuge and care, 3,700 medical and dental visits were funded, and the list goes on and on. Please, if you want to go to their website and see a little more about what they do, and consider giving a couple dollars during this year's campaign. And that is all I have to report.
Any questions or comments for the mayor's chief of director?
Thank you, Mayor Barish.
Reports of communications from the director of law.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Last meeting, I advised council that we were in negotiations with Kinbo regarding the garbage contract. We're still involved in that. We've sent changes that we'd like to see to them, waiting to hear back, so that's still what works, but hopefully we'll have something from Kinbo back soon, so we know where we sit on that. Also, at the last meeting, Councilman Jaworski wanted me to look into the pool ordinances with a couple of questions regarding, I believe one of your questions, Councilman, was whether it's open only to residents or non-residents. And then who has the authority to, you know, make changes regarding that. I reviewed all pertinent ordinances, and it actually does not address one way or another if it's restricted or limited to residents. It does place some... It talks about what residents shall be charged for pool passes, what they must show to get a pool pass, but there's no language saying it's only open to residents or non-residents are not allowed. There is no language at all addressing who is allowed into the pools. As far as policy, it does say that mayor and council, mayor with the approval of council will determine the fees to be charged. But if this is a concern, I know in the past, there's been a lot of talks about residents, non-residents and all that, but I think if that wanted to be codified, that decision, we'd have to have an ordinance saying that, if we want to make that codified. According to what I see here, this has probably always been an internal decision. I know some change, the last time changes were made were in 2013, in March of 2013. I can't find the previous law director's file on it, but I imagine that some parts were left, and they knew it was probably unintentionally, so that this could be something determined by council and the mayor.
Thank you.
Any questions or concerns or comments for the law director? Mr. Councilman Biandolillo.
Thank you, Council President. So SCOT potentially not allowing that residence, and it could be an issue, but is it codified?
Like I said, the ordinance doesn't address... There's nothing that says our pools are only open to residents, or that they are not open to non-residents. There is no language in our current ordinance with that. It's just the only thing involving residents that says that, once again, the mayor and council shall decide upon the fees that'll be charged to residential families used to the swimming pools, and that residence must present a valid aquatic pass to be admitted. But there's really no language that says it's only open to residents.
Councilman Sackus?
Yeah, so we should at some point before next year, sit down and discuss, you know, because there are, you know, stipulations if we want to allow. I know Willoughby has ways they do, but we got to make it so it is right, fair, and, you know, the line is clear, right? So we know what we're doing, and there's no, you know, people get upset because it's one way or the other, but we should definitely address that issue and...
Yeah, I agree, Councilman Sackus, and I presume that prior administrations here, prior councils, like I said, the language is probably this way, because it probably always was handled, or I don't know, prior to this ordinance, but handled internally, those decisions, you know, it's under rules and procedures, and nothing is codified about it. So if that's a concern, I think council should at least talk about it.
Any other questions or comments for the director of law?
Reports of communications from council president. I have none amendments or additions to the agenda. Councilman Jaworski.
Just facing this conversation, and can we add as new business pool passes to just get that item put in committee?
Do you want to say pool pass ordinance?
Sure.
The whole entire ordinance, or do you want to go up? Okay. So new business C, new pass, we'll add new business C, new pass ordinance. Any other additions or amendments to the agenda?
Yes.
Item D, removal of member from civil service commission.
Okay, we have removal of member from the civil service commission.
I'll add to your motion to suspend the rules of council to add the economic development coordinator on the agenda.
Second. Moved by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Bogo, to suspend the rules of city council to include under item 8H, economic development coordinator on this agenda. Discussion? Sandy, please go ahead and roll.
Biandolillo.
Yes.
Bogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kaski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
And the honor amendments or additions to the agenda. Seeing now move to administrators, police chief vice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Another thing I had to add in my monthly report is that interviews for the part-time SRO, once we're off, I've offered somebody a position, and I've been contacting Mr. Spisha, we're hiring out the details. This person has to go through a physical exam, and then I got this set up for SRO class, and after that will come from my report this evening.
Any questions or comments for the police chief?
Thank you, Chief Vice. Fire chief Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. I have nothing to add to my previously submitted report.
Any questions or comments for the fire chief? Councilwoman Kaski.
Did you help with Euchlad Avenue?
No, we were on multiple calls, and we're unable to respond to that.
Any other questions or comments for the fire chief? Thank you, Chief Powers. Finance director Dolez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that I would like to ask of council is that we could have a scheduled finance committee meeting to discuss appropriation, changes, additions for the remainder of the year.
Okay, I will add appropriation changes for 2018 to the finance committee. Any other question or comments for the finance director? Thank you, Ms. Dolez. Engineer Formica.
Thank you, Council President. One thing to add, but to mention that's in my written report, is that the scoring came out for the Ohio Public Works Commission grant applications last week. Looked scored well. We basically were above the line in two projects, which means we could get funded for grants in excess of $330,000. At this time, I'd like to ask for the appropriate committee of council to discuss the final applications which are due in mid-October. In submitting those final applications, a resolution from council authorizing the merit to apply is needed.
What application was it again?
The Ohio Public Works Commission.
Okay. I will add OPWC final application to the finance committee. Okay?
Applications.
Applications.
Any questions or comments for the city engineer? Thank you, Mr. Formica.
Thank you.
Service director, Dan Brodeur.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to request a meeting in regards to street grinding, the similar projects that we've done in Harrison and Catawba.
Yes, sir, that is on our new business B at this, right now, and we'll discuss that and...
Okay, also, the street striping, we did have a street striping completed. We're waiting for the final numbers to see, they came in a little bit under budget, that's what it appears to be, so we're going to see if there is any money left. We might try to do some school zones. We have done a lot of stop bars ourself in-house. Mostly we're staying off the mains, a lot of the stop bars were pretty bad, so we're doing quite a few areas ourself. We've done two sewer jobs that we did budget this year. One was on Telsi and Telsi Yeshiva property. As you know, we have an eight-inch main sewer that goes through there. We've been having some problems with it probably over the last 10 years. 10 years, so what we did is we added a manhole to give us more access to it. The manholes were too far apart, so when we had to service the line, it was too far for our superjet to get to, so we added a manhole in there. The other project that we're doing is on Ridge Road. It's just east of Rush Road. It's about a 500-foot stretch. It's between Seerhurst and Rush Road on the north side of the street. If you walk that, you can see where a lot of the sidewalks have caved in. There's just, I mean, the joints are bad in the sanitary and the storm sewer. So what we did is we did get prices on that. We're actually grouting that line. We started it on Wednesday. They continue today, and they're hoping to rev everything up tomorrow, and then we put the sidewalks back in place that we had to remove. And other than that, that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments for the Councilman Jaworski?
Joe, and with the joints being that bad in the sewer, did the, I guess, did the silt or the soil, if you will, go into the sewer system? Were you guys able to clean that out as well before having everything grouted?
Yes, we did that ourselves. We cleaned the line camera. The line saved on a lot of cost. And what they do is when they find a void in the joint, they pump grout, and the grout actually disperses outside the pipe and will fill that whole void. And they keep track of how many gallons. We actually had a guy there with them to count the gallons to make sure that everything was accurate.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the service director? Thank you, Mr. Dan Brodeur.
The district commissioner, Sac. Thank you, Mr. Council President. I got nothing to add to my monthly report.
Any questions or comments for the district commissioner? Councilman Biandolillo.
Thank you, Council President. Ray, in regards to the Stanning, a situation with Ganley. I appreciate you working on it as efficient as you did, sending the email back that you contacted them. I really appreciate it, and furthermore, the Stanning is appreciated. So thank you very much for your time and work.
Thank you. There are no stop this week.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the district commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Sac. Recreation director, Stock.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just one thing to add to my monthly report. I'd like to thank those who came out to our pickleball opening last Monday. Of course, the beautiful service department did an outstanding job, and who knows? We had a demonstration from a gal from the YMCA. She is going to offer some one-day clinics. I talked with her, and we're going to put together a couple, learn the basic clinics on Saturday, October 6th, Wednesday, October 10th, and Saturday, October 20th. So if you want to learn how to do the basics of pickleball, we will have the opportunity to do so.
Any questions or comments for the recreation director? Thank you, Mr. Stock. And then my development coordinator, Mr. Ray.
Hi. It's my first office meeting, and my name is Monica Drake. I am the, I am the new economic development manager for the cities of Wickliffe, Willoughby, and Kirtland. And so what I've been doing is spending at least one day a week in each city, and throughout the week, working on various, on items in all of the cities. And so it's been very beneficial of what I've seen one city, might roll over and I've seen another city, or also dealing with individual type aspects of each city. So I began a couple of months ago, and so I'm getting my feet wet into everything, working closely with the mayor, identifying, talking to various potential new businesses, working with Pete, reading the current, the current plan that exists today of the TLCI, and looking at what potentially could be implemented. Michael Arshin. Implementing that plan that was created about nine years ago, so I've been doing that. Identifying parcels that are available for development, whether if they're being sold, if they're being available for lease, and talking to various property owners, business owners in the city. And I would like to potentially, at least once a month, explore a little bit as I gain a deeper familiarity with the city, potentially work with council maybe once a month, and the economic development committee, understand your thoughts, your desires as well.
Whenever you want a meeting, just let us know, and we'll make that happen.
Great, thank you, ma'am.
Any questions or comments for the economic development coordinator? Councilman Sackus?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. A lot of things we all hear is about Euclid Avenue and what are we going to do with Euclid Avenue? And as soon as you came in, I know you just started, you're starting to take action on Euclid Avenue, and that, you know, means something. You saw some issues, and you're addressing it, so thank you for that.
And just want to...
Go ahead.
Thanks. No, I just wanted to thank you too. I think we actually had a little longer discussion, you and I, which was great, and it would be fabulous, I think, to have some set time to sit with council, so that we can just really understand sort of the directions you're going, maybe bring up some ideas that we might have, and get a little more cohesive about some of the direction. It'd be great if we could set, you know, time to meet with you specifically. And I forgot to mention, I also go on what's called BRE calls. They're Business Retention and Expansion calls. There is a gentleman that works for the, like, kind of court authority, that's his specific role, but whenever they're in a city that I'm involved in, I go on those calls with him. So I've been in at least three different calls with Patrick, who handles the business retention and expansion, which has been really nice, because I've been able to learn about different businesses here that, minor needs that they, or some of the things they might, vision they have, minor needs. I connected, for instance, Iron Shine with the school system as they were implementing their tenure plan, and looking at the students going into manufacturing industries. So that's also what I've been doing that I forgot to mention.
Any other questions or comments for the economic development coordinator? Thank you, sir. I will now open the floor to audience participation. If anyone would like to address with the city council, please stand, state your name and address with a clerk's record. These persons will have a five-minute maximum amount of time. Anyone like to address with the city council? Mr. Ithilis?
Mark, I'm Commissioner, I'm Lieutenant, I'm like to address the solid council. I know that while I was coming into the city and there'd be doing work, I know it's going to be in the right way, but say, like, on my property, they will rush on board, read my driveway, and I was just hoping, I know in other cities, my daughter, son-in-law, and their neighborhood in Livers, and they, like, had some trouble with the subcontractors for Wow. So I'm just hoping that council makes sure that the residents are protected, even though I know it's the right way, but they won't go under, you know, driveways and sidewalks and everything.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address with the city council? Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Don Martin, 29105 Bridge Road, Wickliffe, Ohio. Proud to be here. There was an item on last Monday, or the September 10 meeting, regarding a special assessment for street lighting, and I'd like to understand that a little better. Does this apply to all residents or specific ones, and is this something that goes on to your real estate taxes with the...
Go ahead and answer.
And I address the finance director, the mayor...
I can answer that, Debbie Mayfield, who's found. It's a, it's a millage. If you're a resident, 1.15 mils is on everyone's property tax. So it's, the special assessment is just like a levy.
But this is new, additional?
No.
No?
No.
That's what I didn't hear.
No, it's been there for a while. They just assess it every year, once a year. Correct? Similar, like, the water bills that aren't paid, we assess those, and it gets paid. So, yeah, nothing new.
That's fine.
Nothing new.
I just was, I'd seen that before, and I thought this was something new and additional, and I was wondering who had lied to everybody.
Would anyone else like to address with city council? Would anyone else like to address with city council?
Sorry, one last comment on that. If you go to the county's website on your taxes and click on the details, it'll show you what the dollar round is, this is our one notes for the streetlights.
Would anyone else like to address with the city council? See, nobody will mark. I will now mark audience participation complete. Any reports? Councilman Biandolillo.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city council utilities committee met on September 17, 2018. Meeting was called to order at 7:45 PM. The purpose was the Wow utility installations. Present were Biandolillo, Bogo, Kaski and Levon. Also present were Jaworski, Saloto, Sackus, Drake, Sac, Dan Brodeur and Formica. City engineer Pete Formica met with Wow representatives about installing our telecommunication services to Wickliffe. During his meeting, service areas and service load center locations were discussed. The committee asked questions about locations, installations. Prior to the committee meeting, detailed infrastructure diagrams, blueprints were emailed to the committee members. The load center boxes, sizes and locations were discussed. There was a concern about residents, locations on or adjacent to their resident property lines, along with tree trimming responsibilities. While, while reputation was impeded upon, building commissioner Sac ensured the committee that the subcontractors installing the services would need to be registered with the city of Wickliffe. In addition, the city of Wickliffe itself would be the final authority having jurisdiction on our installations. In response to concerns about appearances and sizes of load centers, economic developer Drake added that other cities have adopted programs that would add artwork possibly by donation to each box to reflect the images of our city. The committee recommends giving residents a courtesy heads-up to their property when it will be utilized by Wow, and this item has been reported out of committee, meeting adjourned at 8:03 PM. Respectfully submitted, Jason and Biandolillo chairman.
Councilman Jaworski.
The economic development committee met on September 17, 2018. Present Jaworski, Sackus, Saloto and Bogo. Also present Levon, Biandolillo, Kaski, Mayor Barish, Drake, Formica, Dan Brodeur and Sac. Meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM, and the meeting was called to discuss a grant application for any streets that have undergone a TCLI study in Wickliffe, the only street meeting that particular criteria issued Euclid Avenue. Council needs to pass a resolution by October 8 to authorize the application of this grant. It could potentially be used for the beautification or traffic calming on Euclid Avenue. Economic development director Drake said the grant could not be used for resurfacing with multiple other purposes, such as traffic calming, sidewalks, crossroads, street or traffic lights, the very utilities, et cetera. The grant would cover possibly 80% of the project cost, which must be at least $100,000. The project must be finished by 2020. Drake said there could possibly be additional funding through CDGB grants. The mayor was asked about his vision for Euclid Avenue. He envisions traffic calming, sidewalk improvement and new lights. He would like to see fewer lanes, maybe even a bike lane, which will create a more walkable Euclid Avenue. He believes slowing down traffic would lead to more individuals walking on Euclid Avenue. The committee discussed options and felt that since this grant does not cover resurfacing, we should not look into any options that involve resurfacing, such as traffic calming at this time. Suggestions were given to engineer Pete Formica, and he will present them to council for further discussion. This item remains in committee, and the committee will meet, we met today, at 6:45 PM to discuss potential options and associate costs. That meeting was adjourned at 7:43 PM and respectfully submitted.
Councilman Jaworski.
Thank you. That leads me then to today's meeting, which was called to order at 6:48 PM, and present was myself, Sackus, Saloto and Bogo. Also present, Levon, Biandolillo, Mayor Barish, Zeeley, Formica, Sac, Dolez and Powers. There was a discussion about these specific options that Pete presented us, and the mayor recommended option B, and option B includes streetscape of the south side of Euclid Avenue between Bellevue and Warden, and both sides of the avenue from the fire station to the east end of Sweetberry. This option would cost an estimated total of $908,500. The city is hoping for a 85% grant, which that request would be $772,225, with a 15% city share that would cover $136,275. Those numbers do not include soft costs, which will be approximately 18% to 25% of the, of the project. After discussion, there were no objections, and council recommends that the law director draw up the appropriate legislation for option B, so that we can proceed to get the, apply for the grant. Meeting was adjourned at 6:58, or 6:58 respectfully submitted.
Councilman Jaworski.
I'd like to make a motion that we hope that council authorize the law director to prepare legislation for funding for the 2019 TCLI implementation grant, and that the legislation cover streetscape south of Euclid Avenue between Bellevue and Warden, and both sides of Euclid Avenue between the fire station and of Sweetberry. Do you need the, Scott, do you think we need the grant cost in there, or the application cost?
I hope they go to the template they wanted us to use, the new land grab, if I'm correct. They, there wasn't actually a specific funding amount in there. I think we're just, this is still, we're just authorizing the mayor to enter into the grant application, so I don't think we need to put down the geographic locations or any specific dollar or the scope of the project. It'll be a general authorizing the, the application.
Second. Moved by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Biandolillo to authorize law Discussion. Sandy, please go over the roll.
Bialo.
Yes.
Bogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Committee reports, Councilwoman Solot.
Yes. The legislation and welfare committee met on the 17th. Also, the meeting was called order at 8:03. Present were Koski, Sackus, Bialo, Bogo, Jaworski, President Levon, Pete Formica, and Joe Dan Broja, Ray, SAC, Scott Zeeley, and then Monica Drake was also present at that meeting. The topic was really, should we pursue the establishment of rental property registration fees or inspections? Started out with council president Levon. He felt that there should be no charge to the present rental property owners so as not to discriminate as to owner occupied or not. In other words, how do we decide? The one citizen versus another should be charged to own property in the city of Wickliff. He also felt that there should be no extra inspections for any homeowners. Mayor Barbish disagreed. He shared his recent discussion with various property managers of both building and renting businesses. They stated to him that they have no problem with registering and paying annual rental ownership fees and that the fees create a more professional atmosphere. The mayor also felt that in order to keep, well, to help better mitigate enforcement and coverage, we might want to consider hiring someone designated solely to inspect rental properties using the 75K or so that we would collect annually, paying for that individual that way. He suggested that buy annual inspection of rental properties. He felt it is a proactive, for safety and aesthetic preservation of Wickliff homes. President Levon again asked the question, well, why should any homeowners be treated differently? Any homeowner be treated differently? Mr. SAC is then interjected. He said, you know, what would stop rental owners from being, from going elsewhere to own when they could do so with less hassle and fees? Why rock the boat? He felt that our building and the service departments already do a good job of resulting in any problems that might be involved with rentals. Ms. Saloto stated that inspections would infringe upon the rights of a select part of our community. Ms. Koski shared her experience in Euclid with inspections. She owned home rental property in Euclid, was difficult for the owners, and the difficulty was high. She would suggest that we'd have to give the owners explicit time to fix violations and management of these will be difficult. Our law director reminded council that going into homes opens us up to potential lawsuits with respect to privacy laws. He would not recommend entering homes. Mr. Bogo asked what the purpose would be then, if we can't go into the homes? Are we just going to collect fees for no purpose? The mayor again pushed for registration of all rental properties with the names of the renters recorded. Ray SAC reminded us the taxes and maintenance is the responsibility of the landlords, not the renters. Matt Jaworski reminded us that Rita does take care of ensuring that renters pay the income tax portion. In the end, the committee voted unanimously to not recommend rental property fees or registration. Meeting was adjourned 8:25.
Councilman Sac.
Yes, I would like to call a parks and property committee meeting for next Monday, October 1st, at 6:30 for charging for pavilion rentals.
Okay.
What is that?
October 1st, next Monday, 6:30. Any other committee reports? Commission reports?
Seeing no old business moving to new business, property easement, Green Ridge Golf Course. I received an email from the owners who purchased the, what was Argent Ridge Golf Course house. They're looking for easements on the back fence line and on the side of the driveway. I'm going to put that into the committee of the whole committee. Proposals for grinding of asphalt roads. Sir Dan Broja, do you have anything to add to that or not?
Oh, I'd just like to put that in committee.
You sent an email out to council about what's proposed streets, correct? About a month ago?
I believe I did. I actually have a hard copy I can give everybody too. There was two streets that we proposed, one is Maple Dale and the other is Kennedy. Kennedy would probably be the more realistic one to do right now because of the timeframe we are in the season as far as asphalt plans.
Okay. I will add proposals for grinding of asphalt roads to the finance committee. I will call a finance committee meeting for October 1st at 6:45 to discuss proposals for grinding of asphalt roads, appropriation changes for 2018, and the OPWCC final applications. Seeing no ordinances or resolutions, move on to other legislation. Oh, I'm sorry, C, here's a C, pull-pass ordinance. Councilman Jaworski.
Well, thank you, Council President. I would just ask that we place the issue of pull-pass, if you pull-pass ordinance into the proper committee for discussion.
You'll have pull-pass ordinance in the legislation and welfare committee.
Call a committee meeting for next, we add that to what, six?
Uh, maybe 7:30. I have three items in mind, so maybe 7:30 on one night. So you want to call a, let's say, what, committee meeting, October 1st at 7:30? Okay.
New business D, removal of civil service commission member, mayor?
Yes, a fine review of the commissions and the charter. Can't have a member on the civil service commission hold any other appointments, being that Mr. Corrigan is also appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission, like, remove him from the civil service commission.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe, well, you know, this is under our charter here and there is a section for removal from the civil service commission as well too, which the mayor at any time gets to spend, and then that will be made permanent by the concurrence of two-thirds of members of council. So I think it would be appropriate for council to ratify this removal from the board.
Make a motion. Make a motion to remove Mr. Corrigan from the civil service commission. Second. Moved by councilman Bialo, seconded by councilman Bogo, to remove Jim Corrigan from the civil service commission. Discussion. Sandy, please go over the roll.
Bialo.
Yes.
Bogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Saloto. Sorry, Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.
Seeing no ordinances and resolutions, move on to other legislation. Insolunious. I will entertain a motion, move into executive session, consider the sale of real estate property, I should say. Second. So move.
Second.
Moved by councilman Bialo, seconded by councilwoman Solot, move into a second session for the sale of real property. Discussion. Sandy, please go over the roll.
Bialo.
Yes.
Bogo.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Levon.
Yes.
Sackus.
Yes.
Saloto.
Yes.